Sorry to interrupt, I'm gonna call a meeting order. Welcome, everyone. We're gonna have the regular planning commission for February 2025, and we're gonna do the roll call.
Gassen.
Here.
Hauser. Salvia.
Here.
Bachman.
Here.
Klausur.
Here.
Kenjuk.
Here.
Murphy. Stone.
Here. Excellent. If we could do the roll, I mean, the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We're at the point where we ask for public comments. We have a couple of people in the audience. Do you wish to make any statements? Rose, anybody online?
No one's online.
Excellent. We'll have a chance to do that again at the end of the meeting. And now we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes. I see we have January 6th. I know we had a special meeting. I assume we'll get those meeting minutes at the next meeting. But on hand, is January 6th regular meeting minutes? Anybody have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of January 6th.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
And a second. Thank you. Any questions or comments on them? Okay, roll call.
Gassen.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klausur.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes. Excellent. Public hearing portion of the meeting does not have any agenda items, so we'll move on to considerations. Discussion, next steps on the master plan approval process. I assume we have McKenna, maybe John and Vidya online. Is there any introduction from management?
I can just start by saying at our, which was a great joint meeting. Thank you for everybody for attending. So I think John and Vidya put a clear path forward. So I just printed this up before I came down. And the next steps were, at that meeting, planning commission and city council made motions to set these public hearings. Extremely aggressive plan, but if everything stays on track, there's, we had checked all this out. There's time to get them advertised. Jeremy will work with them to get them done. So tonight, it says the February 3rd PC ordinance review focused on manufacturing 1 and 2 industrial districts and zoning map. So that public hearing was set for the March meeting. So on those districts, the next step in March would be public hearing recommendation of approval of all districts. And I saw emails going back and forth through a bunch of you and some city councils who sent to Vidya. And John comments about can we look at some of these, cleaning up some of these districts? And we appreciate that. So I think Vidya can just give us the status on that. This meeting shouldn't take very long. It's gonna be everybody getting comfortable with the districts, and then we'll have our public hearing and see if there's anything from the public that gets added on or taken out in March, and then keep going forward as we planned. So it's pretty straightforward line. We just have to hit all the deadlines. And every time we, if we miss something in one of these, remember, we push it back a month because we, they're scheduled, but we have, we have to open the public hearing and then table them to the next one if we're not ready to have that at that time. So with that, Vidya.
And before we move on to Vidya, that schedule you just outlined will be in the meeting minutes of the special meeting. So for those that didn't write it down.
Correct.
We'll, we'll see that again.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Vidya, if you wouldn't mind kind of enlightening us.
Yes.
Sharing.
Thank you, Chairman Gassen. Thank you, Nick. As a follow-up to the meeting that we had, can you see me properly? I look a little distorted on my own screen, but as long as you can see me, that's fine.
Bigger than life.
As a follow-up to the workshop meeting that we had on the 23rd between the planning commission and the city council, this meeting is the next step that was outlined in the path towards adopting a clean new zoning ordinance with a zoning map. At the meeting, whatever was discussed, it was a workshop meeting, so I want to briefly summarize what we discussed for the members of the audience and those who are listening, so they know how the steps will progress in the zoning ordinance itself. The city adopted its master plan in 2022, and subsequently, the writing of several new districts and fixing of existing districts took place. The planning commission reviewed and had public hearings and recommended approval of changes to the central business district, creation of new districts downtown Edge 1, which is on the west side of Main Street, downtown Edge 2, which would be on the east side of Main Street, that is, next to the CBD district, a small area called Transition District, mixed use, mixed use 1 district. These are the districts that the planning commission had discussed at length. The text was revised, and these districts were then recommended for approval to city council. The last four districts that came before the planning commission had certain changes but did not have a public hearing were the last four district, which is RM1, RM2, RTEC, which is Research Technology, and LI Light Industrial District. I'm going to share the future draft zoning map. I want to clarify that this is a draft zoning map, and we are working on cleaning it up. So if the planning commission can see the zoning map on your screen, this is the draft zoning map. This has not yet been adopted, but this is what will be adopted in the future. So zooming in a little bit on this map, let me just point out the various districts. So this will be the central business district, what is shown in light pink. This is the downtown Edge 1, which is shown in this salmon pink. Downtown Edge 2 is shown in dark red. The significant difference between downtown Edge 1 and downtown Edge 2 is that downtown Edge 1 takes into account that these, this area or west of Main Street is relatively flat. So the buildings built in downtown Edge 1 cannot be very tall, so that they do not impact the residential neighborhoods that are located to the west. So the buildings that would be built on these sites are restricted in height. The parcels that are in darker red, which is downtown Edge 2, have higher height limits, and this is based upon the topography, the area, and the slope of these areas that would allow for taller buildings without impacting the downtown. As I'd mentioned at the workshop meeting, any development that comes either in the downtown Edge 1, Edge 2, or the transition district is required to submit something called a line of sight diagram. Line of sight diagram basically means the developments will have to show you a cross-section east to west, north to south, across from Main Street. The intent is that no structure that is built on these parcels overwhelms or impacts the core downtown historic area. Basically, if you're standing on the sidewalk along Main Street, and you even look to the east or to the west, you will not be able to see the top of the buildings. You will not be able to see any of the buildings that are located in these zones because they will be hidden behind it. The core downtown's integrity will be maintained. So those are the design requirements in these districts. The pink colors that you see are the mixed use and mixed use 1 district. These are two versatile districts that allow for a variety of commercial uses that are mixed and integrated with residential on top to create a more vibrant area that actually contributes further traffic to the downtown businesses. So these are the mixed use districts. The two multiple-family districts that we are talking about. Now, if you look at the future land use plan map, I am going to scroll to the future land use plan map that is in the current 2022 master plan. I'm sorry, I'm zooming in, but the colors are very bright, so it's a little jarring to see, but I hope you can see it. The future land use plan map notes only one multiple-family residential district. The description in the future land use plan is a very broad description for multiple family. That multiple family that is shown in the future land use plan map translates into two multiple-family districts, which we already have in our zoning ordinance, RM1 and RM2. Now, RM1 is going to be renamed as RM1/Mixed Residential. There is a big difference between RM1 and RM2 districts, and that is what I want to clarify tonight because I know there was an email from some residents expressing concern as to exactly what RM1 and RM2 imply. Going back to the draft future zoning map, the colors in these parcels will have to be corrected. The RM2 parcels, I'll first go to RM2. RM2 is multiple-family high-rise district. The current maximum building height allowed in those districts is 80 feet. It is actually being reduced to 60 feet. The areas of the city where the RM2 district will be located is right along the Clinton River Trail over here. This area already has projects approved for it. If you recollect, this is 210 diversion. This is the preserves. This area is the riverside development by Mr. Rendaz's project. So this is the only area that is RM2. The other area that is RM2, which allows for higher buildings, is over here of Letica. If you remember, this already has Cedar Brook located over here. You have the OPC. And then this was the area where the planning commission had a while ago approved a project called Overlook, which never materialized. However, this property has got a significant slope. So this area actually is, this parcel is already developed. This is an existing apartment complex. I'm sorry. I meant to say the east side of Letica. This is, once again, master planned and going to be zoned for RM2. This is where the higher or taller multiple-family residential buildings will go. The other portion of the city that will be RM2 is when you go east on Parkdale, this area is fully developed. It is an existing residential multiple-family development. So this area is already there. The projects for other RM2s are approved over here. This is an existing apartment complex. This is the existing Cedar Brook, and this is the one weakened parcel which does not have a project approved for it at this time. All of the other areas that are shown in the darker mustard color are RM1, which is multiple-family or mixed residential. The parcels, the color needs to be corrected in both of these parcels. This is where Woodward turns down into Ludlow. This is where the, this area is currently zoned industrial, and there are lots of industrial buildings located here. This is the former Solaronics site. RM1 limits maximum building height to two and a half stories, which is the same height that is allowed in all of the single-family residential areas in the entire city. Our single-family districts are R1 through R5, and all of the maximum permitted building height in those R districts is two and a half stories, and RM1 will be limited to two and a half stories. The maximum permitted building height in feet is 30 feet. So the number of stories will be limited to same as a single-family residential, and the roof height is 30 feet when compared to 25 feet for the R districts. That's the only difference between the single-family residential and the way the development standards for the RM are structured. The current zoning ordinance calls for RM1 with 30 feet, two and a half stories. We are keeping the same requirements in the future too for RM1 mixed residential. Mixed residential allows for townhouses and similar type of developments. But none of these areas will have any buildings that are taller than two and a half stories. All of those buildings will be limited to the RM2 only, and those are the areas that is shown in Crosshatch on your map up here. Another correction that I wanted to point out to you is the future map you see over here, it does include some areas over here with an existing, this whole eastern portion of the city is single-family residential. These areas are actually duplexes. So in the master plan, it is actually shown as RT, but we have since found that this development was actually approved as portion of these larger single-family subdivisions when they were built. So the color on the map has to be changed to match this because it is part of the same development itself. So these parcels will not be colored RT. They will actually go to the same color as the existing R district that I referenced. So that is basically a summary of the RM1 and RM2 districts. I know these are districts that we haven't discussed for a long time. I'm happy to answer any questions the planning commission may have specific to the RM1 and RM2 before I speak towards the industrial district and the research tech district.
Vidya, in your explanation, I thought I heard, and maybe I didn't hear correctly, but when you were talking about the R1 through 5 height.
Yes.
I thought you said comparatively, it was 20 feet, and the RM was 35 feet. Did I hear that correctly, that the R is 20? Because that didn't seem right.
No, it's actually the R districts are 25 feet. 25 feet, two and a half stories. The RM1 will be 30 feet, two and a half stories.
25 and 30. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, 25 and 30.
Mayor?
Thank you. Vidya, I have a process question. Thank you for putting this map up and walking us through the section. So from a process standpoint, when do those changes or those corrections get made to that map? And when can we see that map? Because I think that'll help us communicate. Like, this map.
Absolutely.
Really helps us communicate.
It was, we would have loved to have the updated map and all the updated district text in your packet for tonight's meeting, but we had the workshop meeting only on 23rd, and the packets had to go out to you on the 27th, which gave us one business day. So your next packet before your March meeting will have all of the district texts completely cleaned up. It'll have individual maps for each of the districts, and it will have a fully cleaned up zoning map with all the corrections and all the districts clearly shown. You will have a complete concise packet before your next meeting.
Thank you. Vidya?
Yes.
Or Mr. Chairman. Just a question about the definitions of all of it. Will those be included in the next packet as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. You will have, each of the individual district will come like, I clean it up. There'll be no strike-throughs or different color coding. There'll be clean districts with the statement of purpose, the principal permitted uses, the names of the districts. Everything will be clarified, and we'll try to add clarification to say how it matches up to the current zoning ordinance because it'll help you understand that how the current zoning ordinance will be changed, some districts will be changed, and how the future, whatever is there in the current master plan, future land use plan map, how it translates to the zoning districts that we are going to put into the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Klausur, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I think Mayor Salvia and Ms. Murphy covered it, but I, just to clarify, we have not seen the map, right? The video just went over. That was, this is updated based on our feedback from the workshop and the ongoing kind of iterations and feedback you've gotten from us offline. Is that right?
Yes. We are working on this. This map is still a work in progress. We have to clear up. It's, it's just a very complicated map, so I have to make sure when the graphics person does it, I have to go parcel by parcel to check and make sure nothing is switched. So yes, this map will be cleaned up. It still needs tweaks, some color adjustments. For instance, these parcels actually have to show it as RM1. These are the parcels that I mentioned on the east side of the city. These are not technically R2. They should be the same as the green, single-family residential district. So all of those cleanups will be there when you get your next packet.
Thank you. That makes sense. I, initial reaction as I, I was understanding and liking what you were going through, but I'm like, I have not, I don't, it's not matching. That makes sense. Thanks.
Commissioner Sal. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Gassen.
It's not really a question. I'm going back to the downtown Edge district, just more of a comment or thought.
Okay.
The sightline component to that district regulation, in my mind, has always been from guarding and preserving the character of Main Street. Where a building to downtown Edge 2 wouldn't be seen over the top of the buildings on the east side. But on the west side, it's more a protection to the neighborhood, not so much Main Street. It's, the limitations on downtown Edge 1 are more to preserve the integrity of the residential, not Main Street. And I don't know if that was clearly, or clear in the ordinance language for that district.
Actually, the height of the buildings in the downtown Edge 1 district will protect not just the integrity of the neighborhoods, but also of downtown because the height that is permitted over here is the same, if not less, than the central business district. So if you're standing even on the west side of Main Street, you're not going to be able to see the buildings that are built up here. It's going to be screened from your line of sight. The transition district was the key portion because in, originally, when the 2014 master plan was done, there was some discussion whether all of this needs to be downtown Edge 1. Then we realized that the parcels that are over here actually needed to have, these two blocks needed to have slightly different composition and development standards in order to be able to better protect the residential neighborhoods. But I will check the draft text again to make sure, in fact, that the height distinction and the line of sight diagram intent is met for the downtown Edge 1.
Okay. I was just curious. As you were describing, I had different thoughts about it, but thank you.
Mr. Gassen, I do have a question.
Commissioner Stone?
Good evening, Vidya.
Good evening.
So coming into downtown from South Troy and that area and whatnot. So on the left, we have currently a couple multi-story, five, six-story residential buildings, yep, on the west side of the street. And just as you go over the river on the right is the pink color. Yes, thank you. I don't recall the name of the district, but what is the maximum height allowed for a building right there on Main Street?
So that pink will be mixed use 1. So this kind of hot pink is mixed use. This is mixed use 1. If you will give me one minute, I will scroll to the mixed use 1 district. Minimize this a little bit. The mixed use 1 draft should be in here.
And where I'm going with my question, for those that have been around a few years, you know, we had a project come through three, four years ago, and it technically fit because of the way they had the building stepped back from Main Street. I think it was 35 feet. But when they put the massing in the model up, it was a gigantic building, and the eyesight common sense test didn't work. And we all eventually talked them out of it, and I think they're still trying to sell the property. So my question is, is can we write this so that we don't get in that bind or predicament two years down the road with a different developer that purchases that project with big dreams, and they come in and we have to disappoint them?
That's, that's, that's an excellent comment, and the mixed use district is written to take care of that so that in future, nobody buys it thinking they can put up a building that big. If you look at the regulations in the mixed use, the development standards, it clearly says parcels located with frontage on Main Street shall be permitted a maximum building height not to exceed two and a half stories or 35 feet. All projects must demonstrate through a skyline test and detailed diagrams that the proposed building will not impact or affect the appearance of the existing downtown core buildings. Buildings shall not be allowed to exceed the maximum permitted height even through the special projects approval process. So basically, when this district was drafted, the planning commission made it crystal clear. This parcel is at the entrance to the downtown. No leeway or modification will be given. The absolute ceiling is the two and a half stories or 35 feet because that will be in line with what is in downtown. Nothing can exceed that height. So that will take care of the concern with regards to parcels as you're entering up over the bridge, all these areas.
Good question. Thank you.
This parcel.
Okay, Vidya, free to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gassen. So the next district that I would like to speak to is the industrial district. This is a slightly, it had a mouth, it was a mouthful, a long, long name, but we just changed it to Light Industrial District because it got a little too complicated. We had it as LMESO. So right now, if you look at the city's zoning map, we have industrial parcels spread out all over, including all this area around Woodward. All of this is actually zoned industrial. We have industrial on the north side of South Street and on the south side. However, most of the uses that we have, heavy industrial are located in this area. This is where you have the automotive repair shops, the bump shops, the ice shops, so industrial warehouse. All of these are here. So the new industrial zoning district, all of the industrial uses will now be consolidated only on the south side of South Street. And this is where the road goes up further, so there is a significant grade drop in this area. So these parcels, even if they're built industrial, from these parcels, the view, you can't, you can't really see them. So this is the industrial use. We still have in the new ordinance, certain design standards built in. Just because they are industrial, we don't want the sites to be developed in a manner that is inconsistent with the city's vision for it. So all of these uses will remain industrial. The uses that are currently there will all be conforming with the new district language too. There are, however, several industrial uses that are on the north side of South Street that will likely become non-conforming. Because we do have certain bump shops and similar uses, but the north side of South Street that extends over here and all of these parcels on the south side of Parkdale, this is where you have all of the pharmaceutical companies. We have Pfizer, we have Par Pharmaceuticals. I don't know if they are renamed, but all of them are located over here. All of these parcels are now classified as RTEC, which is Research Technology. These parcels are already developed, but currently, they are just called RP, which is just Research Parcel. There are no specific design standards for these parcels. The new district text that we have drafted for RTEC envisions that even if these parcels someday are redeveloped, even if they continue as a pharmaceutical use or other industrial use, they are laid out more in the form of a campus setting. It's not merely large modular or industrial buildings. You do have industrial buildings, but they need to be connected through a sidewalk network. They need to be connected and made into more of a technology campus. So that is the long-term vision for this area of the city and for the area that is north of South Street. The reason also for taking the area north of South Street is because it, these parcels have frontage on Clinton River. Clinton River is such a big asset to the community. To put heavy industrial right on the river does not make sense. So it would be hoped that if a developer buys these parcels, consolidates them, and creates a research campus type of setting, the frontage along the Clinton River can actually be developed as an amenity for the people who are employed here or those who actually come to this research tech area. So those are the last two districts, the industrial district and the research tech district. So those are a sum total of all the districts. So the next step, as Nick outlined, was to have a public hearing for the industrial district, the research tech district, the RM1 and the RM2 district at your March 3 planning commission meeting. For the planning commission meeting, we will make sure not only do you have the clean text for these four districts, we will also provide you with cleaned up text for all the districts and an updated clean zoning map for your reference. You will not be adopting the zoning map at that meeting, but it will give you a clear reference point when you look at the districts to see what they match up to actually on the city map itself. Are there any questions on these two districts?
Yes, Commissioner Klausur?
What happens in the nor, when they change from industrial to the residential, for example, and they're non-conforming? That, can you just explain what happens to the existing businesses that are in those spaces?
So when a business, when a zoning is changed on a business and the use is no longer permitted, they become legal, non-conforming uses because they were legal at the time they were established under the zoning ordinance. So they continue to function as legal uses. The use can operate indefinitely on the property. The parcel can be sold. The parcel ownership can be transferred for the use, and the use can continue. But if the use is ever discontinued for a period of 365 days, under state law, the non-conformity protection gets completely eliminated, and any future use of the parcel must conform to whatever the new zoning district is. So the use can continue as long as the use is not abandoned or stopped. If it is stopped, the clock starts ticking for 365 days. At the end of 365 days, the use is considered as permanently eliminated.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenz.
Vidya, if you could go back to the area north of South Street.
Okay.
Yes. I know that it's currently set for light industrial, but I guess maybe a wish list of mine has been that, you know, that's, I agree with you, that property is, is very desirable, because it is on, on the Clinton River. And I have these like visions that somewhere in the future, maybe it gets totally redeveloped, or, you know, you take several of the parcels, three, four, five of them, and maybe redevelop them into a residential area. Being that they're currently labeled as industrial, how do you move from the industrial to a different zone?
So these parcels are identified in the master plan. I'm going to go back to the future land use plan map, so I'm going to zoom in a little bit on it. So this is the future land use plan map. So the future land use plan map identifies this area as a research technology, which is consistent with what we are recommending. In order to take advantage of the fact that the Clinton River goes over here, the ordinance that we have written and the master plan, as recommended by the master plan, the properties on the north side are all mixed use, which does allow for a mix of commercial, and it allows for residential also to take advantage of the river. But at this time, we cannot change what is shown on the future land use plan map from research technology to residential, because that is too far a departure in the uses itself. If at all, in the future, the city would like to consider that in your next round, when you revisit your master plan at its five-year revisit time in 2027, you can look at that area and decide whether you want it to remain research tech or whether you would like to convert it to mixed residential, mixed use, or some other form of residential zoning. But at this time, you will have to resonate in comments to what the master plan recommends.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, and that's a great question. We actually talked about that and said, we need to preserve our opportunity for a light industrial for the next five-year period from 2022 to 2027. And we identified that's probably one we'll look at in five years ago. Knowing that we had a bunch of residential being planned to be built, we wanted to have that built out first before we said, skip those, then jump down here, and exactly what happened, they didn't build anything. So again, they're first in line, and then we'll reevaluate in five years. So agree, that, that's underutilized area. Mr. Kemp just built his little campus, but he made it like a little, a campus setting for himself. So great question, but in 2027, I think you'll relook at that. And by then, we'll know, are these developers gonna do the multiple family in the core? So good question, good question, good answer.
Yes, it is hoped that as these, when the new zoning map goes into effect and developers have clear predictability on what the development standards are, so they don't have to come under a special projects umbrella and guess what is required. The standards are very clear. They must meet them under the regular zoning itself. At that time, when these parcels start getting developed on the north side, maybe it'll be very desirable to have this also as residential, but like Nick said, maybe in 2027, we'll have a better picture of whether residential would actually be appropriate. And this will be one of the first areas that we will take a look at at the time.
Thank you. Anything further in your update, Vidya?
No, that'll be all, Mr. Gasson. So I am requesting the planning commission, if you would make a motion to set a public hearing for the last four zoning districts, RM1 slash mixed residential, RM2, the light industrial, and the research tech districts. If you'd set a public hearing for the March 3 meeting, we can proceed to the next step as outlined in our workshop meeting.
Thank you. Correction, I think, or clarification, I think we approved that or set the public hearing based on approval of the schedule.
Yeah, what, yeah, so if you.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, I think that was interpreted that way. So it was whatever was written, we're doing. So that would be, Vidya, they would be set already for the March meeting.
Okay. So we're all set there?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on then, miscellaneous. Anything from the commission? Administration? Yes?
I actually have something. So just, we hear 2027 is the next time that the master plan would need to be addressed. I know there's a lot of new planning commission members. Just because it's the end of a five-year period or whatever, that, the requirement under state law is not that you revise it, but that you look at it and consider whether or not you want to revise it. So, I mean, it sounds like there may be, you know, changes that people would want, but just know that whenever you go through this process, there is never a requirement to modify your master plan, only requirement to review it and to consider whether you're going to do it. Just, it's a, hey, you gotta keep looking at it, and it's an opportunity to do that, but you're never, the city's never required to make a change to the master plan, so don't feel like you're forced to do that. Because this has been 10 years without a, you know, and so, you know, it's, yes, it's, it, it, there's a end in sight for this one, but just know that, don't dread the fact that you're, you've gotta go through the whole thing again, in, you know, in three year, two years now, and, and, and have to change everything, because you don't have to change a single thing. You can change one thing, you can do whatever, you know, the city can do whatever it wants to. So hopefully, that's, that's helpful. It's not gonna be as daunting, or shouldn't be as daunting, the next go-round.
Thank you for the input.
I would add, Mr. Chairman, that, remember, if there's something in between that we don't like, side entry garages, things, we can take those on one at a time presently. We've done that, the ZBA, Cody's here, he's talked about looking at making some adjustments through the planning commission on the ordinance. We can do that. That's not the master plan, that's just amended the ordinance. Go through the process here to city council. So don't think that we can't tweak things if we feel like that before 27. That's what we're here for, and that's what this commission is for.
Thank you. Anything for you?
Chairman Gasson?
Jeremy?
If, I may just add a couple of things. I did receive written comments on, after the workshop meeting, from Commissioner Bachman and from Commissioner Kenzou. If any other of the commissioners have any questions, please feel free to email me. I will respond to all of the questions. I'm right now working on the responses to Mr. Kenzou's concerns, but I will respond to all of them, so please do let me know. I also wanted to clarify, add on to what Nick said. Any zoning ordinance amendments are separate from the master plan. The master plan is its own process. We are trying to get this done, but I will be putting together something called as an annual planning program that will basically list off all the concerns. And I took down detailed notes from our workshop meeting, clarifying section 2118, the central business district, visiting the impervious surface, paying concern to environmental issues with regard to stormwater runoff, all those with regard to whatever needs to be addressed in the zoning text amendment. You'll get a separate list of that, and that is something the planning commission can continue working in parallel with cycle and reviews and just their day-to-day planning work.
Thank you, Vidya. Any, you have something? Okay. Moving on then, the public comment. Again, we'll ask the audience if there's anything. Step to the mic and state your name and address.
Hello, Cody Smith, 528 Ludlow. I just have two questions for clarification, based on the conversation tonight. So the first one was about the legal non-conformances, and there was some, I mentioned of the 365 days of use. So if a property goes for basically unused for 365 days, does it have to stay continuous use as what it is? Vidya said like a bump shop. Does it have to stay a bump shop to continue that non-conformance, or can it change into, you know, I don't know, something else? An orange juice manufacturer or something?
No, you cannot substitute one non-conforming use for another non-conforming use. If it's an industrial use, it's not been used for 365 days, it cannot be industrial again. The next use on that parcel has to be RM1 use only. You cannot substitute one non-conforming industrial use for another non-conforming use.
Do, further clarify, just to ask, and maybe that's not what your ask was, but can you change from one non-conforming industrial use to a totally different use, but still be industrial, business type, I guess is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
A business type, but still industrial? Yeah.
So, for example, if there is an auto bump shop, the zoning is now changed, and it is now a non-conforming use. It has to remain an auto bump shop. It cannot transition from an auto bump shop to an auto bump shop and used car sales. You cannot, you cannot add on to the use, you cannot modify to the use. The moment the zoning is changed, the use is frozen as it is from that day onwards. It can continue keeping the exact same use. You cannot modify it, you cannot add to it.
Thank you.
So that, that's how non-conforming works.
Sorry to interrupt your time, Cody.
No, that was the exact question I was trying to answer. So thank you, I just wasn't verbing it, or verbalizing it well. And then another question regarding, I think it was Commissioner Kenzou's question about, you know, the north side of South Street, if we could change that to be residential. I think the answer was, we have to stick to the master plan in that area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, for now, yes.
Okay. So that leads into my second question. So going to Dilman and Upton, the master plan has that as RT, but now we're deviating to be RM1. So why is it okay to change in some spots, but not others?
Very good question. So when we had reviewed the parcel, the Soleronics parcel also, you can deviate from the master plan if the development pattern in the area and the background information that you collect for the use of the parcel supports the change that deviates from it. At this point of time, you really have no information that justifies saying industrial use is not going to be successful, or the existing RTEC is not going to be successful, we should change it to residential. We have no background documentation to show why we can deviate. Typically, a rezoning must always be in conformance to the master plan. But if you deviate from the master plan, you need to have adequate justification and substantiation in order to do that. We have that kind of substantiation and background information for the area around Woodward. At this point of time, we really have nothing going on in South Street for us to be able to justify or make such a change unilaterally.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, Rose, anybody online?
I just have someone that joined, but I don't see their, they might still be connecting, but I don't see a hand raised.
Okay, hopefully, they heard that, and if they do want to ask a question, they'll raise their hand. Okay. Well, that concludes our agenda tonight. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. See you next month.
Good job, Vidya.
Thank you. Can't wait.